Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July 16, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Griscoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I will make a motion to adopt the agenda with one minor modification. We will move item number 10 off of the consent agenda, which is the resolution accepting donations for Lyons Coon Creek Park up to item 2.5. So in our proclamations and presentations.
Motion by Geisler, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then the agenda is adopted. And we are up to proclamations and presentations, and item number one is a citizens' award of merit. Chief Wise.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, this is one of my favorite occasions as police chief where I can stand in front of you, the council, and our community and tell a story about how great it is to live in a caring community like Coon Rapids. Sometimes heroic actions happen where lives are altered and ultimately saved, and we think it's important that we take a moment to recognize those events so that people can see exactly what's happening behind the scenes in our community. So with that, I would like to invite actually a bunch of people who are involved to come step up behind me. Everybody's gonna be shy, but we're gonna do it. Bob, you too. We'll see if we can catch everybody where the citizens on TV can see this. But, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to tell you a little story. On May 10, 2019, at about 8:15 PM, officers, firefighters, and paramedics were dispatched to the 13100 block of Zion Street on a report of a man who crashed his ATV into a home and was bleeding from the head. When first responders, which included Officer Ariel Huddelson and Community Service Officer Sierra Peterson, along with firefighters Jason Plouffe and Greg Lachesky arrived, they found Robert Berg, the victim, lying on the front steps of the home. And the home and the front door were badly damaged with glass everywhere. He had crashed an ATV into the front. The ATV was found overturned nearby. The victim had severe head trauma with substantial bleeding, as well as a compound or open fracture to his lower left leg. Both of these injuries are immediately life-threatening. Robert had been moving the ATV from the backyard into an attached garage when something went horribly wrong. Robert lost control of the ATV near the front sidewalk when it accelerated quickly into the front concrete steps and through the glass storm door impacting the metal front door. First responders arrived to find two neighbors, Sandy and Bianca Dixon, rendering first aid to the victim. Sandy and Bianca, upon seeing what had happened, quickly recognized the severity of the victim's wounds and took immediate action to control the bleeding by finding towels and applying direct pressure to the head wound. First responders also learned that the victim's 13-year-old daughter Natalie, upon learning of the accident, called 911 to get help on the way and stayed on the phone to give vital information and updates to the first responders via dispatch, all while under what would be unimaginable pressure for this 13-year-old. She also had the wherewithal to call the Chan-Hessin Dinner Theater box office because she knew her mother was attending a play there and would have her cellphone off. Natalie had recently completed a Red Cross babysitter training and learned how to remain calm during an emergency so those needing help could get it. If not for the immediate action of all involved and the life-saving efforts of Sandy and Bianca Dixon, there would have been a very different outcome. All three clearly helped save the life of another person, thereby earning a citizens' award of merit. I also want to make an honorable mention. The younger daughter of Mr. Berg, Jenna, also remained calm in the face of pressure and managed to get control of the family dogs and keep them out of the broken glass. Again, no small feat for kids that are seeing their dad in the condition that I'm describing. So with that, actually with the help maybe of Officer Huddelson to step up here, we are gonna award citizens' award of merits to three people. So it'll be awarded in quick recognition for the actions to help a victim of an ATV accident on May 10, 2019 by providing life-saving first aid. Your actions, Natalie Berg, Bianca Dixon, and Sandy Dixon clearly helped save the life of another, and you thereby earned the citizens' award of merit. So with that, I'll let you pass that one off to Sandy Dixon. And this award of merit is to Natalie Berg, his daughter. I'm gonna step out of the way. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes. We'll hope for safety in our community. As always, we do our best at all times, but it warms my heart to know that in the Oaks of Shenandoah, this is the kind of neighbors you can count on living next door too. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, everyone. That was a very compelling story, and it's nice to know there are folks like that around town, so, thank you.
I'd like to know more about that babysitting course. It's a pretty good course.
Red Cross babysitting course, yeah. Well, and who would even remember to call a landline? You know? That's very astute. All right. So there's really only one way of following that. Chief Piper is going to be here to present the fill-the-boot check to MDA.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak. Since the early 1950s, firefighters across the country have raised millions of dollars for muscular dystrophy. Years ago, there was a telethon with Jerry Lewis and all that, and in fact, the International Association of Firefighters of which we're part of is an elite supporter of the group of MDA because what that means is over $5 million per year are raised for the cause to help these people afflicted with various neuromuscular diseases. This year, we spent three very warm days out on Northdale and Main Street with some warm temperatures, and the public was very generous, and it was a record year. So thanks to my coworkers, I'm very proud of every one of them for standing out there, and I'm grateful for all the generous people that showed up and dumped everything from their ashtrays with change in it to $100 at a time. It was really an amazing event, and I'm grateful again for all of the above. Andy Piesert and Pat Metz, two of my coworkers, organized the event, and Andy's got a few words to say.
Councilmembers, so back in 2008, a little history for our fill-the-boot. We started doing fill-the-boot, and we raised $10,000. Over the past six years, we've stood on the same corner every end of June, Main Street and Northdale, and the people's response in our city has been amazing. So this year, we set out with a goal. Me, Pat, and two other coworkers went to MDA fill-the-boot kickoff event. They told us we had to raise more than we did the year before, so we decided on $32,500 is gonna be our number. Well, we got a bright idea from some of our colleagues down at Roseville that to team up with a brewery, we chose Alloy, our city's brewery, to host a kickoff event for fill-the-boot. We ended up raising over $1,000 at Alloy in one night, in about five hours. They donated a dollar per pint. That was a great way to start it. Then we went out on the street corners, and we had a record year. This surpassed anything we could ever imagine. We raised $35,500 this year. So it's been great for us, it's been great for MDA, and as a total, we've raised over $180,000 for the Muscular Dystrophy Association.
Any?
Thank you, Andy and Chief Piper, and then, you know, everyone on the council for having me here. My name's Anya. I work on behalf of the Muscular Dystrophy Association. I'm a development specialist, and I know I'm kind of echoing what they just said, but just the generosity that I've seen come out of this community is really astounding. What I do is working with the firefighters. I go to fill the boots almost every other week, so I travel across the state into North Dakota and western Wisconsin, and every boot drive, I'm never, you know, it never ceases to amaze me just how generous people are. But Coon Rapids is no exception. In fact, this is a really, really generous community. Last year, we raised about $27,000, so, I mean, that was a big jump in just one year's time. And we keep coming out year after year, and the reason we keep doing so is because it's effective. The community welcomes us to do so, and there still is a need to fund research, provide amazing opportunities for kids with neuromuscular diseases, and just help, you know, be champions to those who might not be as able-bodied as the rest of us. So thank you guys so much.
All right. That's a good question. Should I come around and take that check? Or not?
Yeah, so $35,517, after all that coin was added up.
On behalf of the Coon Rapids Fire Department, I'm very grateful for the teamwork that all my coworkers brought to the table, and I'd like to present this to you.
All right. And when you come up there and the firefighters are working all the lanes, and it's, yeah, it's cool. $35,517. Man.
I was more impressed with the other math of a dollar, a pint, and a thousand dollars on that thing.
That's a lot of pints.
I was up there helping with that.
Got a couple of bucks in there.
All right. We are up to item 2.5. I like it. Which if you're following along on this evening's agenda, is item number 10, accepting a donation for the Lyons, or for the Lyons Coon Creek Park. So probably want to just go to the podium, whoever wants to tell us about it, or are you just gonna hand the check off now, or what's going on?
Good evening, council. Actually, the check's already been received by the city.
Oh, all right.
We want to be a little proactive on this. The donation that we just provided the city for Lyons Coon Creek Park is for the purchase of additional benches. We have a couple of traditional benches that we're gonna be going into some spots in there, and there's one specialty bench that actually kinda looks an awful lot like our Lyons Drinking Fountain.
Ah.
That's in the park. So we'll have another unique item in the park there. Where the Lyons Club has been very excited and being affiliated with this park since its inception. We worked very hard, along with the city and the county, to get this park developed, and of course, our club has provided, I guess, hundreds of thousands of dollars towards the park over time. And this is just another continuation of us being able to maintain this park that is loved by the city. Of course, it's the most-used playground in the city, and of course, with it bearing our name, we want to take a little pride and ownership there, I guess, if you want to call it that. So, once again, we're very pleased to provide that check for $7,040 for the additional benches to be put in Lyons Coon Creek Park.
Excellent. We're anxious for that park to be open again this fall, October?
Late fall.
Late fall. Kids should plan on playing it next year.
Yes.
All right.
I always understand that the playground's the last thing to go in, so we would probably encourage everybody to make sure to head out to the park next spring, and maybe we can see if the Lyons will be out there as part of a, maybe a grand opening or something like that. We'd love to partner with the city on an event like that.
I'm sure it will be one of our meetings in the park next year, would be my guess. So...
Be nice to use the new parking lot over there, just to check that out.
Yeah, absolutely. All right. Well, so somebody would like to, Councilmember Demmer?
I move to adopt Resolution 19-71 to accept $7,040 donation from the Coon Rapids Lyons Club.
Second. Motion by Demmer, a second by Kicker. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries, and we've just accepted that donation that you so generously gave us a while back.
Thank you very much. We look forward to helping out in the future with the assets in the park and utilizing the park for our picnics and other events.
Absolutely. Excellent. Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, council.
And now we are at item 3, approval of the minutes from the June 18 meeting.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Wells?
Move to adopt June 18.
Second.
Motion by Wells, second by Johnson. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes from the June 18 meeting. Sorry to get distracted. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. And we are up to the consent agenda. We have many things on the consent agenda. The first item is actually item 4 on our agenda this evening, and this is to approve an Anoka Hanupan Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement. The existing joint powers agreement has been in place since September of 2018, and the joint powers agreement is amended when new language is introduced. In this case, the definition of the task force commander has been clarified to state the position will be filled on a full-time basis by a lieutenant assigned by the sheriff's office and approved by the advisory board. The commander had formerly been defined as a part-time position. Also, language has been added to the JPA, which says compensation for this commander will be funded 50% from the budget of the sheriff's office and 50% from grant funds received from the state, and the position formerly was compensated through the sheriff's office only. The commander still reports directly to the advisory board for matters pertaining to operations of the task force. And the current members of the Drug Task Force are the police departments of Anoka, Blaine, Champlin, Columbia Heights, Coon Rapids, Fridley, Maple Grove, Ramsey, Rogers, and the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. So with this motion, we will be approving the 2019 Joint Powers Agreement with the Anoka Hanupan Narcotics and Violent Crimes Task Force. The next item on our agenda is to adopt Resolution 19-66, appointing Anthony Mills to the Arts Commission. Anthony Mills has submitted an application for the Arts Commission and attended the April 16 and May 28 meeting. After discussion with the applicant at the June 18 meeting, the Arts Commission recommends Mr. Mills be appointed to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2021. So with this, we'll be adopting Resolution 19-66, appointing Anthony Mills to the Arts Commission with a term expiring December 31, 2021. Next item on our agenda is item 6, adopt Resolution 19-67, establishing the city manager's salary. Closed meeting summary. On June 18, the city council held a closed meeting pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-05-sub3 for the purpose of conducting the city manager's performance review. In attendance at this closed meeting were Mayor Cook, all council members, except for Councilmember Demmer, and city manager Matt Stemwaddle. During the closed meeting, the city council reviewed the city manager's accomplishments and performance during the previous year. The city council also discussed the terms of the city manager's employment agreement and reviewed compensation data for chief administrative officer positions in similarly-sized metro area cities. Upon the conclusion of the performance review and compensation discussion, the city council was agreeable to adjusting city manager Matt Stemwaddle's base salary and deferred compensation. The attached resolution establishes the city manager's annual base salary at $165,672, a step increase within the city's 2019 compensation plan effective June 17, 2019. Mr. Stemwaddle's employer contribution to deferred compensation will increase to $3,000 annually as compared to the current contribution of $2,500 annually. So with this, we'll be adopting Resolution 19-67, a resolution establishing the city manager's salary. Item 7 on the consent agenda, or on this evening's agenda on the consent agenda, is to approve final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated for Project 19-18 Xavier Street Mill and Overlay. And the, we're going to approve the final payment to Northwest Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $6,959.53 for Project 19-18 Xavier Street Mill and Overlay. Next on our agenda is the item 8, adopt Resolution 19-68, authorizing sub-grant agreement with Common Bond Communities for Galway Place Townhomes. And this is all to do with a $200,000 livable communities local housing incentives account grant for the Galway Place Townhomes project. The city and the Met Council entered into a grant agreement in May of this year. The Galway Place Townhomes provides affordable housing to residents at or below 60% of the area median income. Common Bond Communities Incorporated acquired the property in 2017 and will be doing significant rehabilitation to the exterior of the buildings and inside the individual units totaling just over $2.5 million. So with this, we're looking to approve Resolution 19-68, authorizing the city to enter into a sub-agent agreement with Common Bond Communities Incorporated for use of the LHIA grant funds on the Galway Place Townhome project. And further, the mayor and city manager are authorized to execute the sub-grant agreement. Next item on our agenda is, on our consent, is item 9, accept right-of-entry agreement with TCA Real Estate LLC. On May 18, 2017, TCA Real Estate LLC received site plan approval for the construction of an 80,500-square-foot two-story building to replace the existing 28,516-square-foot Coon Rapids Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram located at 10541 Woodcrest Drive. This right-of-entry agreement allows the city to periodically enter the property to exercise hydrants and valves and flush the water main system. The utility and drainage systems within the site are considered private, and the property owner will continue to own and maintain these items. This agreement simply provides the city the ability to ensure appropriate fire protection. So with this, we will accept the attached right-of-entry agreement with TCA Real Estate LLC for its new auto dealership facility at 10541 Woodcrest Drive. And item 10 was moved up to 2.5. So item 11, still on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 19-78, accepting grant funds from Coon Creek Watershed District and approve water quality cost share agreement. City staff submitted three water quality cost share program applications to the Coon Creek Watershed District for the following Foley Boulevard San Creek Culvert replacement, part of the street reconstruction project. This work will provide bank stabilization for reduced erosion and increased habitat connectivity. The city was awarded the grant maximum of $50,000 of this project. Second item is for goose management program. Annual contracted removal of geese from high-population areas along impaired creeks to reduce E. coli and phosphorus loading to Coon Creek. The city was awarded up to $3,000 of the project's total cost, which is 50%. And then JOMA, cutting-edge snow plow blades. Cutting-edge snow plow blades. Public Works proposed the purchase of four sets. These blades are designed to better follow the contour of roads, thus reducing the need for excess salt and anti-ice chemical treatments in an effort to reduce the effects of chloride loading on water bodies. The city was awarded up to $11,200 of the purchase cost, which represents 50%. The Coon Creek Watershed District agrees to disburse 80% of the approved cost share amounts, which comes to $51,360. Once the attached agreement is executed, the city will implement the projects by December 31, 2020, and the Coon Creek Watershed District will disburse any additional remaining funds upon proof of completion. So with this, we will adopt Resolution 19-78, accepting grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District and authorize execution of the water quality cost share agreement. And then item 12, which is our last item on this evening's consent agenda, is to approve an agreement with the Anoka Ramsey Community College for our security contract. The contract between the city and state of Minnesota is reviewed and renewed each year, roughly following the state's fiscal calendar in a typical school year. The current contract, which I should have started at the beginning, the Coon Rapids Police Department provides evening security patrols and student escort services to Anoka Ramsey Community College through the part-time employment of police reserve officers. This is accomplished utilizing an agreement between the city and the state of Minnesota. We already covered all that. The new contract reflects a 2% increase in the hourly rate charged for the reserve officer and a vehicle. Additionally, contingency funds for special events increased from 20 hours to 90 for a total contract amount of $33,000. The new contract would be effective July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020. The college has requested to be invoiced monthly for the actual hours worked by police reserve officers at the rate agreed upon in attachment B of this agreement. So we are looking to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement with the state of Minnesota and Anoka Ramsey Community College to provide security services for 2019 and 2020. Mr. Brody, how long did you have your hand up? I was not looking up.
In regard to that last item, we are still kind of finishing up the last details on that, so that agreement may change a bit, the hours, the financial piece will not. So I just ask when you make the motion to approve the consent agenda that you contingent that item 12 on the city attorney's approval of additional changes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody get that changed, item 12?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will make a motion to adopt the consent agenda with stipulation for item number 12, that additional changes are acceptable to the contract per city attorney's approval.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Discussion? Councilmember Demmer?
Just a thank you to Mr. Mills for signing up for the Arts Commission. You know, we have a lot of commissions that are volunteer commissions, and they don't work without volunteers. Curious if anyone on the staff knows of any open positions on any of the commissions that they would like to mention now to try to get more people to fill them.
Ms. Lenz, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, yes, there are openings on the Arts Commission and the Board of Adjustment and Appeal, and probably the sustainability, so there's several openings. If you're interested, you can let us know here at City Hall.
Thank you.
And the application is on the website?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. The other thing I would mention is, I just have to again say, that Xavier Street Mill and Overlay, what a bargain. Oh my gosh, it just made that road like new, and $145,000. Just, I was very surprised. Yeah, nice. Mayor? Yeah. Councilmember Griscoviac?
A lot on our consent agenda, and I, of course, I approve of all of it, but I've never seen nine items on a consent agenda, so just a couple of things. First of all, that Mill and Overlay on Xavier's, excellent job, good value for our money, and it came in under the contracted amount. We don't really see that very often, so I was pleased to see that. Number 6 here establishing regarding the mayor, the manager, and as our memo noted, we feel that the manager's doing a good job for the city, and so I just want to thank you for that, as well as all the staff. I think you're doing a great job for us there. And then, I was pleased to see the Lyons donation moved up to the proclamation because they've been supporting our community for so long. And then, lastly, on Resolution 19-78, accepting the grant funds from the Coon Creek Watershed District, just a little note on that, that those grants actually come from taxpayer money that's paid into Anoka County via property taxes by the residents in our watershed district. So I just want to point out a few things on the consent agenda. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Question, clarifications? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is approved, adopted. And we are on to item 13, consider Resolution number 19-12-sub9, awarding a contract for Port Riverwalk grading. Mr. Hammer, you want to just kind of hit the highlights, or?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This project, we talked about a few weeks back, it was an opportunity to keep the Port Riverwalk project moving forward as a public project. It's the developers' responsibility from the grading standpoint, but these are all reimbursable costs. We got significant interest in the project. We had, the low bid came in about $300,000 less than what our estimate is, so it would be our recommendation that we move forward, start the mass grading on that site, and we'll be... site, and we'll be coming back with a revised, revised purchase agreement and development agreement, um, and hopefully awarding some, uh, public improvements. It'll be a big night, uh, on August 20th with a whole lot of Port Riverwalk items, so I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
But, Mr. Hammer, um, so it kind of goes, it says North Pine Aggregate Incorporated without any comments, but I don't remember seeing their name before. Have we used them before?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, they haven't worked, at least during my time here in Coon Rapids. Uh, I'm, I'm well familiar with them in, in my past dealings and, um, experience, and, um, I was quite pleased to see that they kind of hit it, uh, as, as hard as they did. Uh, I think they've, they moved quite a bit of dirt in this area town, and so, um, I, I think it's a good deal.
Okay.
And they're a good contractor.
Those were the words I was waiting for.
Yes. I'll say excellent contractor.
All right. Counsel?
Uh, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Uh, move to adopt Resolution Number 19-12 Sub 9, Awarding a Contract to North Pine Aggregate Inc. in the amount of $1,534,986 for grading and erosion control to serve the Port Riverwalk housing development, redevelopment.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Is there discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Gruskovjak?
I just wanted to ask our council here that the one point five, three, four million in grading that the city is going to kind of front will be due to us at signing from Centra. In the off case that that purchase agreement falls through, is the city then still on the hook for the one, the, the grading work?
That is correct, Councilmember Gruskovjak. So there is, uh, there is some risk associated with this, that, that we will be grading it to their, their development needs. And that's why on the 20th, uh, while this is already happening, we'll be probably talking about public infrastructure at that time and really getting to that closing and development agreement and really formalizing those costs. But from now until August 20th, you are correct that this is a, a, a risk to the city.
A risk that we're well aware of and that council and staff and the mayor and council are all comfortable with as well. Right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the way I see it, it's, it's a site improvement, so even if this does fall through, you would think it would be a benefit to the next person that would purchase it, so I, I would think it would come back. I mean, I would think you could add that on.
Yes, and Mr. Mayor, um, to, to me, while there is a slight risk, it's, helps us move this forward. This is a very exciting project, um, we've been looking forward to something in the Port Riverwalk area for many years, and to keep this going in a way that allows, you know, something to happen yet this year, um, is great.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion is carried. Uh, we are up to new business. Uh, item 14, Consider Resolution 19-69, Awarding the Sale of $6,840,000 in General Obligation Bonds Series 2019A. And, uh, Ms. Hanson, or do we want to bring up Nick over here?
Mayor and council, um, the sale of the GO bond series 2019A took place this morning, and we're ver, we had a very successful bidding and received four bids, all coming in below 1.87% interest rate. We had conservative, conservatively assumed approximately 2.4 would be our interest rate going into this, uh, in May. The winning bid came in from Baird at 1.76% true interest, so it was really a great, great bidding process. Tonight, Mr. Nick Anhut, a senior municipal advisor for Aylers, is here to present the bid sale to you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and people of Coon Rapids. Nick Anhut from Ellers and Associates were longtime advisors to the city and happy to present the results of the bids that we received on your behalf this morning. Uh, first and foremost, uh, the financing under consideration is a series of general obligation bonds. That means they're bonds backed by the full faith and credit of the community. Uh, they are anticipated to be repaid over the course of the next 10 years for portions of the city's 2019 street reconstruction projects, and they'll be repaid by a combination of a dedicated tax levy, special assessments against the benefited properties along those streets, as well as, uh, future utility revenues. The council authorized this financing last month. I'm happy to result that in the meantime, with the lead of the finance department, uh, we had a discussion with Moody's Investors Service, who provided a credit rating on behalf of the city of Coon Rapids, which helped us obtain those rates that Fran mentioned just a minute ago. The city's AA1 bond rating was affirmed by Moody's Investors Service, perhaps not a, a surprise, but a good feeling, and that is the second highest bond rating that they do provide, puts the city amongst the top 15 percentile of all cities they rate across the country. So it is a very strong rating and certainly reflective of the bids that were received this morning. Uh, Moody's, I, I will say that we discussed last week at a work session with the council several of the rating metrics that they utilize in evaluating the city's finances, and the reports that we received, uh, has been updated since then, and, and you should note that all but one of those factors have improved, reflective of a great year that was had in 2018, continuance of the city's financial policies and, and strong management practices. So kudos to the city and, and its staff, and you all. Uh, four bids were received this morning, the low bid coming from Baird out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Uh, three of the bids came in from, uh, underwriters or firms within the local, uh, Minnesota and Wisconsin nexus, uh, but Baird was the winner, coming in at 1.6, or 1.76 true interest cost. Uh, the high bid came in at 1.86%, and if you wanted to boil down that difference, I know it sounds very small, but it's about a $32,000 difference in interest expense uh, between the low and the high bid. But I will, I will also mention that having all four of the bids within that tight shot group is actually, um, a good sign, and it, and it certainly is a sign that we evaluate and when we look at how other bonds are pricing in the marketplace, this is definitely, uh, in line with where we're seeing pricing activity across the board here, certainly in Minnesota and the strong metropolitan area, and that AA1 credit rating. So you can be, you can feel, rest assured that it is in line with market expectation and is a very fair bid and something we're very pleased with and certainly recommending to the city. The final principal amount of the bonds that was authorized for sale was $6.8 million. That was to provide the proceeds necessary, uh, for the projects. Uh, as a result of the bid that was received, Baird was willing to pay, or they requested to pay a premium on those bonds, so about a million dollars worth of extra proceeds they were willing to pay upfront in exchange for amortizing that with future interest payments over time. If we left everything alone and, and provided that result to you, that would result in about a million dollars in extra proceeds that you could utilize for the projects, proceeds that aren't necessary for these projects, uh, and then you would have to repay that over time, over the course of that 10-year repayment. We had a discussion with finance staff, it was not deemed necessary to do so, and so we downsized the issue by that million dollars plus. So the final principal amount in the resolution provided for the council will be for the amount of $5,795,000, so roughly a million, uh, 45,000 less than what was authorized in your action last month. But again, still delivering the exact amount of proceeds necessary to complete these projects and allowing you to take advantage of that low interest cost that, uh, Baird was providing. Overall, about a $271,000 reduction from what was budgeted or anticipated, as, as Fran did mention, uh, using the rates that we had last month, uh, that will show up in the form of levy savings, uh, to you all, as well as a reduction in the amount of revenues necessary to service the water utility portion of this project. And so, uh, a very favorable result and certainly something that we stand behind and we are recommending to the city that you consider for adoption this evening. Should you move forward, closing is anticipated for August 8th, and that's when proceeds will be wired into the city's accounts to, uh, continue to pay for those projects that are in progress. Be happy to address any of the council's questions, but again, we on behalf of Ellers are certainly recommending that the council award, uh, these bonds to Baird in the amount of $5,795,000, as is included in the updated resolution provided by your bond attorney, Kennedy Engraven.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Um, just for people at home, we, uh, we had a good discussion about this at the work session. We asked all the, the normal questions we ask, such as, will it negatively impact our, our ratings? Um, the, the quick answer is, nope. Um, and, uh, and so the, the key there is by having the rating level we have, we're able to get these good interest rates. If our rating level, if we borrowed too much money, our rating level would fall and we wouldn't get as good of interest rates and we'd have to pay more money to fix our roads. So, uh, the combination of keeping the ratings where they are, which is, you know, fantastic work by our, uh, our finance group, and then, um, being able to, uh, fix the roads as, as cheaply as we can, uh, they go hand in hand. So I would like to move Resolution Number 19-69, uh, awarding the sale of $5,795,000 in general obligation improvement and utility bonds, series 2019A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor? I, I think fantastic is great. Thank you.
Okay, good. I was just hoping it wasn't going to ripple down.
No, no, no.
All right, excellent. So we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, excellent. Item 15 this evening is to consider Resolution 19-12A Sub 8, Approving Plans and Specifications for Port Riverwalk Phase 1 Streets and Utilities and Authorize Solicitation of Bids. Is this a, is this a Mr. Hammer thing, or is this a, anybody want to, or should I just read all this stuff?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, I can take it briefly. Um, this is kind of a companion to the grading project. Uh, we're, we're continuing to move forward, uh, looking at a, an area that Centra could be building homes as early as this fall in and around the Avoset slash Zilla Street intersection, uh, kind of the cul-de-sac leading down to the east towards East River Road. So it's, it's a small portion of the site, but it gives, uh, the infrastructure and puts that in place so we can start building some of the homes, and we'll come back later with a, a larger package for the balance of the site as that develops, and we've still got Coon Rapids Boulevard to do, so that'll come back to you here later this summer and fall as well. So this is just the phase one piece, looking to go out for bids. Um, and again, as I mentioned, August 20th will, will be a big night as we review this development agreement, Platts, um, all kinds of things. So this gives us the opportunity to at least see what we can get done this fall still.
All right. Councilmember Demmer?
Um, anything interesting about these roads, the, the bids on these roads? We're, we're building roads from scratch here, which is not what we normally do. Normally, we're tearing out an old road, um, or the utilities. Part, part of what I'm asking is, are there any things we've learned in the last 10, 15 years that we're applying to this to, to make them last longer, make them cheaper? Any, anything special we should know?
Councilmember Demmer, that, uh, I guess the easy answer is not really. Um, these will be some of our state aid roads, so they'll be built to a little higher standard, certainly. Um, full trunk utilities going in, you know, it's, we'll, we'll certainly use the best materials available as we go. Um, but yeah, it's just, it, it'll give us, I think, a little more competition when it comes to bidding because it's not just a road project, it's not just a utility project. There are multiple contractors that will have some interest in, in seeing this. It'll be a tight timeline, but, um, you know, it's, it's, building roads are building roads, um, but they will be, again, to a little bit higher standards due to, um, the ability to recoup dollars for them in the future for their maintenance.
Anything with the utilities that, I mean, you know, we have some neighborhoods that have more water main breaks than others, you know, are we in a situation where we're pretty confident these will be sturdy, long-lasting things, or is it luck of the draw?
Well, part of the, the issue is the soils that lie underneath, and with us doing the grading package, we'll be investigating that as, as part of what we do there. There's some unknown fill in here, we'll certainly be investigating it, but with all the soil borings that have been done, there's nothing to indicate that, you know, we're in, in clay soils, it's primarily sand still. So, um, I, I, I wouldn't anticipate anything, but if we do, that'll be something we have to talk about as part of the grading and you get it better prepped as part of that work as opposed to waiting for the utility work to happen. And you'll, you'll never get it perfect because until you dig down that 15, 20 feet, you're only looking at the surface. And, um, so, I think with the borings that have been done and, and the conditions that it appears to be now, uh, I, I don't see anything, at least right now, that's telling me we should be in poor soil conditions.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I'll move adoption of Resolution 19-12A, Part 8, Approving Plans and Specifications and Ordering Advertisement of Bids for the Proposed Phase 1 Streets and Utilities to Serve the Port Riverwalk Housing Redevelopment.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Discussion? Councilmember Gruskovjak?
I just want to confirm that this, this is a specific, uh, site plan and, uh, solicitation of bids, but no actual award or work would be performed prior to the actual closing on the 20th for this project, right?
That is correct, Councilmember Gruskovjak. Um, I think the, the closing is anticipated somewhere around, uh, August 25th, somewhere in that neighborhood. Um, once, i-if we get to the point of awarding it on the 20th, um, that's when we start looking at securing bonds and pre-construction meetings, but the 20th is going to be a big day to understand where the costs are and comfort level and things, but, um, no, no work would physically start unless something happens with the closing that we're not anticipating.
Got it, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on to item 16. Oh, come on, there we go. Consider Resolutions 19-73, 19-74, 19-75, 19-76, 19-77, and 19-79, calling for a public hearing to vacate public roadway easements. Um, this is for the various street vacations in the Port Riverwalk area, and this is as we vacate the old streets and we're getting ready to put in the new streets, correct? What happened to 19-78? We didn't like that one?
Your Honor? It was, we discovered we needed one more additional resolution, and by the time we got ahold of Joan, she had already given an out to somebody else. It was farther up on the consent agenda, I think.
Resolutions, they're hot items.
Yep.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I, I'd like to move adoption of Resolutions 19-73, 19-74, 19-75, 19-76, 19-77, and 19-79, all of which call for a public hearing on August 20th, 2019, for vacation of public roadway easements.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item 17, Consider Resolution 19-72, Requesting Conveyance of Tax Forfeit Property 10841 Kumquat Street. The single-family house located at 10841 Kumquat Street was recently forfeited due to non-payment of property taxes. Because significant code enforcement activity has occurred at this location and the property is in poor condition, staff believes it is a good candidate for redevelopment through the scattered site acquisition program. Uh, the council is being asked to adopt a resolution formally requesting that the Anoka County Board of Commissioners resolve to convey the property with an unrestricted deed to the city's housing and redevelopment authority at a reduced price. Anoka County's policy for conveying tax forfeit property to a public agency for correction of blight is that the sale price is half of the assessed value of the property. In this case, the sale price would be $75,300. Staff will work with Anoka County to convey the property in the upcoming months, and the HRA will be asked, asked to accept a deed once the terms of the transaction are established. Mr. Brown, anything else, sir?
No, that sums it up. I can answer any questions.
You did a nice job there. All right, anybody have any questions for Mr. Brown?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Wells?
I don't have any questions, but I'm familiar with this property and I think it's a great use of, uh, this program, so I would move to, uh, council adopt Resolution 19-72, requesting the conveyance of a tax forfeit property at 10841 Kumquat Street.
I'll second it, and that's my ward, and I'd like to see it redeveloped.
All right, motion by Wells, second by Johnson. Uh, any discussion?
Uh, Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
Now, we had one of these in, uh, in my neighborhood last year, and the, uh, the new house has been built and it's now occupied, and it's a very nice house, so I completely concur, this is a great program.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. Will we be able to burn it? I'll bet there will be a party. I'll bet there will be a party.
Into the sun.
All right. Item eighteen. Consider easement agreement for Project seventeen dash thirty, Hanson Boulevard Expansion, Trunk Highway Ten to Main Street. Mr. Hemmer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the city is looking to purchase an easement from the homeowners association. This will allow the construction of a westbound to northbound right-hand turn lane as part of the Hanson project that's proposed next year by Anoka County from roughly highway ten to Main Street. It was an opportunity for the city to step in. This is a cost contribution that will come forward in the future JPA for this, but we felt it was important for us to step in and make this negotiation. We've got some sidewalk work in there, the sidewalk's our responsibility, so it made it easier for us to step in while we still had some time before the project came last year. So I think things went really well is how we went through the process, and so with that, I'm making a recommendation that we go ahead and make this purchase, and that just becomes a city contribution as part of our cost to the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Councilmember Guskowiac?
I have a question. Is this conveyance or this easement more so for the sidewalk? Because isn't there already a turn lane there? And is maybe, has the design changed a little bit from Anoka County in any way?
No, Councilmember Guskowiac, that's exactly right. I mean, they could fit a right turn lane in there, but then it makes the sidewalk problematic. So in order to push everything out, that ten feet, that's necessary, that sidewalk starts to straddle that property line. So there's a drainage and utility easement there, so we're just basically purchasing the drainage and utility easement that exists and kind of moving everything back that five feet to make it all fit and make it be similar, of similar standards to what we have everywhere else.
Okay. That's what I anticipate, more for the sidewalk than the turn lane.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hemmer? All right. Anybody want to move this forward?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that council accept the permanent easement with Rainbow Estates Townhome Associations, Inc., and authorize execution of the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Guskowiac. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are on item nineteen. Consider, planning case nineteen dash twelve. Consider preliminary and final plat Riverdale Sixth Edition, thirty-two hundred Main Street Red Mill Properties. Mr. Harlecker, is there anything you want to show us on this, or should we cover the description here?
I've got a couple slides where I can just give a brief summary of what's being proposed. It's up to your discretion.
Well, anybody, yeah.
Let's take a look.
Sure, please. Oh, come on. You were thinking about it, weren't you? Councilman Wells?
Yeah, while he's coming up here, I'd be really curious to see the parking. I go to this site all the time and the parking lot's full already, so it's, I'm going to be interested to hear what the parking situation's going to be.
Yeah, Mayor and council, what is before the council tonight is preliminary and final plat to subdivide this property into two lots. One lot will be for the existing Wells Fargo building. The other lot is for a sixty-one hundred square foot multi-tenant office building, excuse me, that was approved by the planning commission back in June. Lot one is the site that will contain the Wells Fargo existing building. Lot two will hold the proposed or the approved multi-tenant commercial building. Lot one is two point nine acres, lot two is one point one acres. Right here. At their meeting on the twentieth, no one spoke at the public hearing, and the planning commission did recommend approval unanimously of the proposed preliminary plat, which is shown here. This is the final plat. The easements that you see going across here are accommodating water lines. The existing easement cuts across the property here. New easements are proposed to accommodate the new utility configuration across the site. With that, it's recommended that the city council approve the attached resolution nineteen dash seventy, granting final plat approval for Riverdale Sixth Edition.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
Speaking to the parking, we had a long conversation about parking in apartments. What are the guidelines for parking in office buildings? I mean, is this like, I don't know how tall this building is, but just at a quick look, it looks like it has about thirty parking spots.
There, Councilmember Demmer, there is sufficient parking between the two lots to accommodate the parking needs of both the existing office building as well as the proposed commercial building.
Between the two lots?
Pardon?
Between the two lots.
Correct.
Does that create any problems where, I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is, one of the two places is going to need the other group's lot to get to sufficient parking, and that, that sounds like it could cause a problem down the road.
Well, Councilmember Demmer, it's a similar situation to what was done in front of Home Depot, where they've got shared parking and access agreements between the two properties.
Okay, so you're enforcing that there are access agreements that keep that from being a problem later?
Correct. That was one of the conditions of the site plan approval.
Okay.
That Home Depot one didn't feel as shoehorned as this one.
If this is a one-story office building, or two, or three, or...
Well, sixty-one hundred square feet, wasn't it?
Oh, the commercial building is a single-story. The Wells Fargo building is how many stories? Three? Three stories. That's the applicant in the audience.
Yeah, single-story, that's not a...
Huh.
Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
Question for President Harlecker. Is the entrance off of Northdale going to be moved down to accommodate this building? And is there going to be a drive that flows through?
Between the two?
Between the two.
Yeah, Councilmember Guskowiac, the office, the access point was moved south about a hundred feet, and that's in accordance with a comprehensive access study that was done as part of the Riverdale area. That was one of their recommendations. And the traffic flow will go essentially through here to get over here, to get in this building. It'll be a right turn in to get in front of the building here.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac? Or Geisler? I've got the G thing going.
I've got the G. Other G. So, having looked at this as it was coming to planning, I was like, ooh, this feels awfully tight, and what is the circulation? And I watched the planning commission meeting with this, and they spent an awful lot of time looking at this, and there were concerns, and then the traffic study was actually, I think, presented to them because it had just been completed, you know, because you've got a drive-through, you've got stacking, and how are people going to come out of the drive-through? And so I, well, I can trust the traffic study that says that it's going to be fine. I think it's still a little tight, but, you know, you look at, it's got all of the required parking that, you know, that we would state. It meets all of the engineering requirements, and it meets the traffic plans. And at that point, I kind of have to trust the professionals that they know what they're doing, you know, and the site plan. It's a nice-looking building, you know, that's already been approved, so it's, to me, going to be a change in the look of that corner, and it probably will be for good, so.
So was that a motion?
I can certainly make a motion.
Councilmember Geisler?
In planning case nineteen dash twelve, I will move to approve the preliminary and plat and approve resolution nineteen dash twenty, granting final plat approval. No, nineteen dash seventy, I can read tonight. Granting final plat approval for Riverdale Sixth Edition with the stated two conditions of all engineering comments be addressed and all comments from Anoka County Highway Department be addressed.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Guskowiac?
Just to add on to Councilmember Geisler's comments on this, it does look shoehorned in here, but the planning commission did ask a lot of questions about how this is going to work in here. And one thing, for me, anyway, that is making me support this or tending me to support this is, the owner of the Wells Fargo building talked about Wells Fargo is their primary tenant. They wouldn't do anything to this site that would upset that tenant and their parking, and that coupled with the experts on the traffic flow and the parking spaces, tends me to go with, you know, the experts and that.
Councilmember Demmer?
And I agree as well, you know, we count on traffic studies and, but the thing I think is really unique about this versus, say, a neighborhood is, if they're wrong, there's nowhere else for those cars to park, they just lose business. It's not like they're parking in someone's front yard. So, I mean, there's no reason for us not to trust them, they have every incentive to get this right.
Yeah, I agree. All right. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Councilmember Wells?
The token no vote, just because I go there all the time, and it's already a parking lot that's not easy to maneuver, so I just see this as, you know, it's common sense, it just doesn't work for me.
Yeah. It's kind of grown on me, and I think moving that entrance to, and I remember the traffic study recommended moving that away from Main Street, and I think that is going to help that flow in there a little bit. But, all right. Other discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Councilmembers Johnson and Wells opposed. Item twenty is to consider amendment for the two thousand nineteen, thank you, Mr. Harlecker, two thousand nineteen miscellaneous fee schedule, police forfeiture, seizure, and storage fees. So we're looking at amending the fee schedule to include fees for vehicles seized and stored under Minnesota Statute one sixty-nine A dot thirty-six. During the last legislative session, an amendment was made to Minnesota Statute one sixty-nine A dot sixty-three to add subdivision thirteen. The subdivision creates a process for defendants who have been charged with the requisite underlying impaired driving crime and had the forfeiture process started against the vehicle to obtain ignition interlock to retrieve the vehicle. Included in the statute is the authorization to collect towing, seizure, and storage fees for all vehicles that have been seized under the statute. Towing fees are set by the contracted towing agency. After discussion with the city attorney's office, a reasonable seizure fee would be based on the minimum amount of staff time for processing the seizure. Staff estimates this cost to be approximately two hundred dollars. The storage fees would be based from the date of the seizure. Each seven-day period would be a hundred dollars with a cap of five hundred dollars for storage. As an example, if a subject was arrested on August first and retrieved the vehicle on August sixth, it would be one hundred dollars in storage fees. If the vehicle was retrieved on August eleventh, it would be two hundred dollars, and so on, until the five hundred dollar capped maximum. So is there a way that we could just end up with these cars for longer? Hundred dollars a week isn't much for storage, and is there any way that we could end up with something for like a couple of months that we'd, Mr. Brody?
Under our forfeiture statute, it varies. We could hold vehicles up to six months. However, at this point, we hadn't been collecting any storage fees. We also want to make sure they're reasonable, things of that nature, and that's why we do have that cap. Again, it's a new statute, where there's other components of it that we're also working through, so we just thought, in order to set these fees, we wanted to be reasonable, we wanted them to make it easy to understand for folks, and like I said, we think it represents a good number to be at, so we're just asking that you do approve them as indicated.
Thank you. Councilmember Demmer?
So I'm understanding it right, this is statute, so somebody gets impaired driving, and then in such a way that the law states they have to get one of those ignition interlock devices, the, essentially the breathalyzer that they have to use to start the car. What I don't know about this law is, do they have to get that before they can retrieve it, or can they have someone else come retrieve it, drive it to the place to get that? Because what I, what I don't know is if we're holding it, how long is it going to take to get that installed? If that takes a month to get installed, that's a problem.
Mr. Brody?
Before you even answer the question, I might dovetail on that. So the question that I have is, as a practical matter, can somebody actually get the ignition interlock installed and get their vehicle out within a week? And if the answer is really, as a practical matter, no, then ought we to consider perhaps a different kind of schedule?
Couple of things. We don't really know, because it's a brand-new entity. They are allowed to come both here to the facility itself, the statute authorizes them to be able to come in and have it installed right here in our lot, in our storage facility, or I believe have a licensed driver take it away with the understanding that ignition interlock can provide some proof of that. And so frankly, we've already been getting requests on this. I think it can happen fairly quickly. I think folks are generally motivated. There's a, and maybe even Councilmember Johnson can attest to this, there's a pretty good market out there of this ignition interlock. There's several companies that provide that service. I assume that they may be getting geared up more. There could be a potential for an increased amount of business. I'm just to give a little bit of background, too, just on DWI forfeitures. These aren't first-time offenders, these are generally repeat offenders that have had multiple DWIs, they're not, like I said, your first-timer. And so that's the kind of, that's what type of vehicle we're looking at here, what kind of criminal history, I guess, we're looking at here. So, and again, I guess, to Councilmember Johnson's comments, we certainly can reevaluate, we'll probably, you know, bring these fees back in December with our overall fee structure. If we find out this isn't working, or that it seems unreasonable, or it seems too reasonable, then we'll be making some recommendations at that time.
Chief Wies?
Mayor, council, actually, I can speak to the vehicle inner, or the ignition interlock, is that they're private contractors, and much like attorneys, they reach out to people who've been arrested, and frankly, they're competing with each other. The first one to get the business is the first one that's agreeable to the person who's been arrested. I don't think there's going to be any delay whatsoever if somebody wants to proceed with the process of getting their car back. I've seen the letters myself that other people have provided to me from these companies.
Councilmember Demmer?
I really appreciate all that input, because, you know, I mean, I heard the commercials for them, right? And that's the extent to which I, and what you're trying to do, which is really hard, is you're trying to hit that spot between, this can't be like a, I can never get my car and I can't go back to work situation, but it also has to be, we have to cover our costs and, you know, we want to strongly discourage repeat impaired driving. So trying to strike that balance is going to be difficult. It looks like you've done as reasonable a job as you're going to on the first try, and I think it's very good to go back and reassess it, because, you know, a hundred bucks, if they can do it in a week, that, that might even be a little too low. Five hundred bucks, I mean, some of these cars aren't worth five hundred dollars, right? So I think you're trying to strike it well. I'd support it. If no one else is going to talk, I'll make the motion, and then please continue to monitor it to make sure it's doing what it's supposed to. So I would move to approve the amendment to the two thousand nineteen miscellaneous fee schedule to allow for police forfeiture, seizure, and storage fees.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kicker. Discussion? I think we already beat it to death. I like it. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries. And we are at the open-mic public comment portion of our meeting this evening. And here to address this, all right. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes, and please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council. Handouts?
Yes.
Hey, Carol.
Thank you.
These are the same that was emailed, right? Looks like it. Okay. Okay.
I'm here on behalf of our townhome complex, Woods on the Park, Park Two, and the concerns that we have about the pond. The, it's a safety concern for us and for our residents, and you will see here that we have a number of signatures, so if you have an update for us...
No, but could you start with your name and address?
Looks like it, okay.
Okay.
I'm here on behalf of, uh, our con- our townhome complex, Woods on the Park, Park Two, and the concerns that we have about the pond, uh, the, it's a, it's a safety concern for us and for our residents, and you will see here that we have, uh, a number of signatures, so, if you have an update for us...
No, but could you start with your name and address, everybody knows?
Oh, I'm Carol Ladue, and I reside at fifteen twenty-eight, one hundred twenty-ninth Avenue Northwest in Coon Rapids, I'm here with two other residents of our Woods on the Park condominium con- uh, complex, townhome complex.
Okay.
Um, as you will see here, we have, uh, pictures verifying the condition of the pond and the overgrown conditions that exist, uh, we are quite concerned about the safety and welfare of not only our grandchildren, but the children that reside in the two-story townhomes directly to the south of our complex, uh, it is, I, I can no longer see the pond at all, I mean, we have very tall trees in front of my home, but the overgrown brush is such a safety hazard that if a child wandered in there, no one could see him or her. So, we are proposing that the city step forward and do something about clearing the brush, two of our residents have done a really great job of clearing the brush in front of their homes, um, because they fear for children in the area, but it's too big a task, really, we're all old peeps, and, um, uh, it's too big a task for us.
Okay, um, so, yeah, so, this was all submitted, and this came out to council in the form of an email, so we've had an opportunity to review it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And what'll happen now is, they're gonna get some responses and get back to you.
I appreciate it, yeah, we're very anxious that this gets handled before the cold weather.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
All right, any other, uh, anybody else here for open mic? No, Mr. Holland? Hi, all right, then we are, uh, we don't have any reports from previous open mics, and we are into other business. Chief Wise?
Yeah, this is way too much of me, it seems, but...
You're gonna open the meeting and close the meeting?
Yeah, that said, is, uh, Tuesday, uh, August sixth is Night to Unite, uh, it's a big deal for us here in Coon Rapids, Night to Unite against crime, uh, we believe that the safest communities are those where neighbors know each other, we've had a very strong program for a number of years in our city, where we have well over a hundred neighborhood parties, where on that date, people get together, generally speaking, in a front yard, um, to make sure that they're building strong relationships, and we saw that earlier this evening when we talked about a life being saved because of neighbors, um, you, the relationship you have with your neighbors is an important one, and I can't help but think, um, I'm sure just about every neighborhood, probably every resident in Coon Rapids, uh, thinks for a minute, you know, there's a neighbor down the street that I've been meaning to talk to, and you just haven't done it, uh, this is a great opportunity to do that, so, um, the police department will help, we'll do everything we can to help you host a party, flyers, tell you how to do it, where to set up, how to set up, what a good party looks like, so, please consider hosting a party for your neighborhood, or if you don't wanna host, then look for your, somebody in your neighborhood who is hosting a party, um, that information is all available from us, so if you don't know of a party, contact the police department, we'll tell you who's having one that's close by, and we'll get you invited, but it literally is meant to be the most casual event, where you just walk in, chat with your neighbors, talk about your neighborhood, how great it is, or even concerns that you might have, and, um, you can rely on a visit from police, an officer will show up and talk to the group, and also, you can rely on a visit from our fire department, um, the firefighters use that opportunity also to talk about public safety, uh, that's their, um, corner of the universe, so it's a big deal, and I really, we're shooting for a hundred and fifty parties this year, which would be like a twenty percent increase, so we really need Coon Rapids to step up.
I absolutely cannot encourage folks enough, I mean, I just, it, it's, it's so fun to go to the meeting, or go to the Night to Night groups, and hear all the neighbors that know each other, and then I went to one where a new family moved into the neighborhood, and they said, well, it didn't appear anybody was gonna host, so they hosted a party, and folks from one block this way and one block this way met for the first time, they've lived there for twenty years, it was a first-time meeting because these new folks decided to host it, whoops, sorry, Steve, host a party, and I just thought, this is exactly how this is supposed to work, and, no, you're right on, I think these are great.
Well, and let me add too, is that most of you councilmembers, if you're around, I know, go to visit as many parties as you can, particularly in your ward, um, because you wanna get that communication, one-on-one communication with a resident, and it's not often that you get a chance to do that with an elected leader.
Yeah, well, absolutely, all right, and so, chief, they can just go to the website, or they can call, or what would they do?
Yeah, either one, the, um, on the police department page of the website, big banner, Night to Unite, click on that, and you'll see all the resources that we have, that you can print up and do it on your own, or if you want some help, just call us, and we'll help you, easy.
Excellent, thank you, all right, other business? We've had one successful meeting in the park this year, Riverwind went fabulous, we had, uh, the, the pickleball folks were there, and a great turnout, and perfect weather, and, um, and our next one will be, do you remember?
Mayor, council, we've got, um, Summer in the City meetings, the next two Tuesdays, on the twenty-third and the thirtieth, the first will be at Crooked Lake Park, the second will be at Moore Park, and a kind of a new wrinkle for these next meetings, we'll actually have a food truck on site, they'll be providing snow cones for the, for whomever, for free, and then if people are interested, they can buy food from the food truck, and so we're just trying, trying to bring in some new wrinkles to those events to keep them fresh.
I see, I see wrinkles as bad things.
[laughing]
Incentives, encouragement, uh, fun things.
New good wrinkles.
Bring your fishing rod to Crooked Lake Park, it's a nice park.
Mr., Mr. Demmer, do we know when we're, that second pier's gonna come back to Crooked Lake?
Mr. Mayor, council, we have, we're waiting on some of the brackets, so we've received information, or we've received the floats from the DNR, we've directly purchased the lumber to be reimbursed, we need some of the brackets so we can assemble it, I'm hoping, um, within a month, it'll be back out there, I'd really like to get it back out, um, so we can get the bank shored up again and really complete that project, so, um, we're gonna self-perform, but, uh, it's not helpful when you don't have everything, and it's also not helpful when now's the busy time to try to get it done as well.
Sure, so, probably not gonna happen by the twenty-third, then.
It will not be done, definitely by the twenty-third, and if it gets too late, it may be worth saying, do we wanna force this before winter, but I'd, I'd really like to get things done.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Griszkowiac?
If I could just add that I, Crooked Lake Park is kind of a jewel in Coon Rapids, being that there's the lake right there, my kids and friends are all talking about how cool it is to go there and swim again, so I just encourage, uh, residents to come out, it's in Ward One, check out the new park, I won't be there because I've got a business, uh, in, uh, in Chicago to be at, but I just, uh, encourage everyone to come out and check out that new Redent Park.
Oh, for the, for the meeting in the park?
For the meeting in the park on Tuesday, the twenty-third.
Got it, your ward, you won't be there.
Right, what can I say?
We'll fill, we'll fill in for you, perfect, perfect. The, uh, the one of Riverwind was just, it was fantastic, those new pickleball courts are amazing, and if you don't know what pickleball is, uh, I went and took the free lessons that, later in the week, um, it is, it is the most fun I've had, kind of outdoors on a court for a long, long time, and there's a program through the city where you can get lessons, you can get the equipment, um, and so the city is trying to encourage people to participate in it, and I would encourage people to do it, I think it's something that my family will be taking up, as I get older and my knees get more weak, I don't know that I can play tennis like I used to, but pickleball, that was a lot of fun.
Looked like fun.
I burned through a pair of dress socks playing it, so, anyway.
Appropriate footwear, you're saying?
Yes, you should have tennis shoes when you go to a pickleball court, and not a suit.
All right, other business? Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, I'll just mention a few other things, we actually have a, a lot of opportunities to engage, uh, the community in the next coming weeks, beyond even Summer in the City, uh, one thing I want to mention is, our farmers' markets are up and running, Wednesdays at the Coon Rapids Ice Center from three to six, and if you check out our community calendar, you'll see that there are several of those that have sort of a special focus, one that's actually coming up tomorrow is our Health and Wellness Day, uh, there's a Kids Day and a Senior Day, I believe that's, uh, all kind of August and September, as the farmers' market will close out, uh, the Rec on the Spot Program continues to grow, um, so for those folks who aren't aware of that, that we have a kind of a mobile unit that moves to different parks a couple times a day, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays throughout the city, and it's really just been a great opportunity for kids in that neighborhood to go to the park, um, kinda get exposed to some programming and, uh, different activities out there, and then they move to the next park and do the same thing, so that's been a lot of, of fun as well, and then of course, our concerts in the park continue on Thursday evenings.
Excellent, um, Chief Wise, or Chief Piper, we just had a fairly large event down there at Boulevard Plaza, Fourth of July, the firefighters, kudos, North Star Lions, kudos, um, it was a fabulous event, anything you wanna mention about that?
Uh, Mayor, councilmembers, I think it's a, uh, a great example of many, many, many different people working together, and when we have our planning meetings, there's gotta be, what, twenty, twenty-five people between city, various city departments and outside people, and, uh, it clearly wouldn't happen without all these people coming together and being a team, and, uh, I'm just grateful for everybody's hard work, uh, that went into it, and, uh, I think it was a safe event, it was a fun event, and, uh, a few days prior to, we were thinking we might have a washout for the first time in years, the weather forecast was not looking good, and ultimately, as you all know, there was a little bit of rain here and there, but it was a very successful event, again, thanks to all involved and Mother Nature.
Yeah, yeah, it was a great event, it was, the, the parade kicked it off, they had four marching bands this year, so I would encourage folks to get back out to the parade next year and check it out, um, car show was good, the bands were good, the fireworks are, of course, fabulous, had a little, little confusion because they got, they moved a little further to the west, so, a lot of people were set up for the old location, but hopefully next year, they'll be able to make that adjustment.
Well, I think it's, it's, there's a, a combination of things that went into that decision, and, and one of them was clearly the parking, I mean, parking is at a premium, as you all know, and, uh, by moving it over there, it opened up the, uh, Old Ice Arena, the Anoka, uh, Ramsey Lot across to the north of that lot, and then all of Anoka Ramsey's parking, uh, and, and like I say, it's, uh, you know, for the, we, our, Jake, our fireworks guy, can look at the program for next year, but I mean, some of the stuff would be at probably a treetop level, uh, when you were at, on the gr- carnival grounds, but ultimately, I'm sure from a, uh, an ordering standpoint, some of the lower stuff could be pulled out of the show, and everything would be high, and I think that would help with, uh, viewing it from the grounds, I mean, if you're on Anoka Ramsey's property, it had to be, uh, amazing, and, and I also saw people that were on the river, or across the river, on the Champlin side over there, and a couple of the pictures of the fireworks with the backdrop, or with the front drop, whatever you wanna call it, of the college, it really was, uh, some interesting, uh, photos, yeah.
All right, great event, thank you for all the work, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, forgot one thing, due to Night to Unite being, uh, Tuesday, uh, August sixth, we're moving our next regularly scheduled council meeting to Wednesday, August seventh, so all, for many viewers out there, you'll have to wait one more day to do that meeting.
Your honor? All right, Councilmember Wells?
I hate to, after all this positive, but this is kind of a positive, Kendall's is so busy, we talked about it briefly last Tuesday, and I just happened, the very next night, get a complaint about trying to go to the restaurant, and their elderly parents had to walk, you know, three hundred yards, and unfortunately, they went Wednesday, the night of men's league, or club, whatever they call it, and I'm just wondering, you know, especially for that night, 'cause I've made the mistake of going to Kendall's on a Wednesday, and you can't get anywhere near the place, uh, could we try to get some kind of valet service, or a golf cart, or something, at lea- especially on Wednesdays, like I say, with that men's league, if you go to the restaurant, you're not gonna park anywhere near, I know people aren't supposed to park there, but we all know they do, but it'd just be nice if we could work out some kind of solution, I hate to think, these people happen to, happen to live in Ramsey, and, you know, I, I don't want people's experience to be, I'm not going back to Kendall's, and, uh, if we could do something to avoid that, I just think that'd be great.
Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor, council, Morrissey Hospitality, who operates our facility up there, has been working with Tim Anderson at the golf course, experimenting with different things, um, some of them being a little more aggressive, recently, their, on major event days, they're putting up gates and signs, and that's had some positive effect, I would say, um, but even more recently, they've had some staff people out there, when the, um, you know, attendees are arriving to actually direct the flow, uh, they've added a gate, kind of at that west end of the main parking lot, to provide one more, uh, prohibitive feature for people who are maybe ignoring the first six or seven signs on their way in through the parking lot, um, so we're trying to, uh, tackle it from different ways, we have experimented in the past with some, uh, success of using our, our people mover golf cart on those busy days, I don't know that it's been all that consistent, but that's something we can look at a little closer, uh, when we know things like the men's league are, are gonna take up just about all the parking we have available out there.
All right, thank you, any other business? Okay?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to adjourn, wow, that was the same time, I'm gonna give it, I'm gonna give it to Griszkowiac.
All right.
Second by Demmer, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.[1787.01]